Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. Welcome to this meeting of the Clovis City Commission. We will begin our meeting now with a word of prayer. If you would please pray with me. Dear God in heaven, we thank you for the blessings you give us each day. Thank you for this wonderful community. Lord, thank you for the promise of rain. As we look at the clouds out there, we pray you'd send moisture and you'd be glorified in doing so. We ask that you would bless our community with joy, peace, and prosperity. And guide us as we make the city's decisions this evening. We pray in Jesus' name, amen. Please join me in honoring our country's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendships among united cultures. Our meeting is called to order. Would the clerk please call roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner David Bryant?
Here.
Commissioner Casaus?
Here.
Commissioner Porter?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant?
Here.
Commissioner Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Rowley?
Here.
Commissioner Parla?
Here.
Mayor Morris?
Here. Thank you, Ms. Burrows. Next is approval of the agenda. Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, are there any objections to the agenda as it is printed?
No.
Hearing and seeing none, we will adopt the agenda. And please record a yes vote for all Commission members. Next is approval of minutes. The first set of minutes for approval are the Thursday, July 21st, 2022 meeting minutes. If you've had a chance to review those, are there any corrections or objections to how they are printed?
No.
Hearing and seeing none, we will adopt the Thursday, July 21st, 2022 minutes. And please record a yes vote for each of the members of the Commission. Next, the Thursday, July 28th meeting minutes. Any objection to how they are printed? Hearing and seeing none, we will adopt the minutes from the July 28th meeting. And please record a yes vote for all members of the Commission. Next, recognition of visitors and guests. Thank you to each of you who have joined us this evening in person here in the Commission chamber. We'd also like to recognize those that are viewing online. We appreciate your interest and your following what your city government is up to. Thank you for being here. We look forward to hearing from you when we reach the point in the agenda that you're here to share with us on. We have no planned presentations, however, we're going to do one under receipts of petitions and communications. So we'll go there next. And I wanted to introduce everyone to some folks that I've invited to the meeting tonight to share with us. Of course, the Wing Commander from Cannon Air Force Base, Colonel Terrence Taylor, is here with us, as well as Rick Masters. And Sarah Williams is here. She is the Youth, or excuse me, Child and Youth Education School Liaison with Cannon Air Force Base. And this group is here to tell us about an award they were presented with recently, the Pete Taylor Partnership of Excellence Award. Ms. Williams, Colonel Taylor, Mr. Masters, and guests, and if you could please introduce us to your guests who I've not been able to mention.
First, I want to say, Mr. Bryant, we missed you in DC. Thank you. You did go with us last time, so we missed you. So we're here to talk about an award. Recently, we went to DC and we received an international award for the Military Child Education Coalition. And this award is based on a program we did with Clovis Schools and the community. And it has to do with the Juvenile Detention Center. We took the children from that center that were coming out of the center, and we took airmen from the base and trained them. And then we partnered them up for a nine-week program where they were mentors for the students. And they helped them to do short-term goals, long-term goals, how to be a citizen back in the community, how to be part of your family again, how to go back to school, and just be a good citizen. And the program's amazing. We've been doing it for years. We have so many mentors trained. We've had so many kids go through the program. And then this year, the program is now part of Curry County Youth Services. So they own the program now, so we're continuing to do training. We just trained 34 airmen. So they're starting the program for this year. We're really excited to be here. And that's pretty much the award. I just want to mention one thing, like, this is our third international award we've won with our community here in Clovis and with Clovis Schools. So we appreciate all the support that you guys give us.
Certainly, congratulations.
Thank you.
I will just pile on. Mr. Mayor, thanks for the invite. Council members, good to see you all. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. We did bring Colonel Brent Greer with us, who is the new Vice Wing Commander there at Cannon Air Force Base. So now I can't get into but so much trouble because I've got a partner. I'll just add to what Sarah mentioned. You know, the Pete Taylor Partnership for Excellence Awards, these are Department of Defense-wide awards and recognitions. And over the past four years, the partnership between the families and military members at Cannon Air Force Base and the community leaders in town, of three of the past four years, we have been recognized for that partnership. And I think that that is saying something. Again, across the entire Department of Defense, many of you have heard me say before how strong the relationship and the bonds are between, you know, our Cannon family and our community family as well. And I just appreciate the opportunity. And I'm glad that, you know, that partnership was recognized yet again. And once again, it was an honor to go to DC and, you know, represent on behalf of not just Cannon Air Force Base, but Curry County and the school system and all that is represented here. So thank you all very much.
Well, thank you, Colonel. And I love that the award celebrates the partnerships. And, you know, we don't take the partnerships with Cannon or that exist between Cannon and the community for granted. We cherish them. And so thank you for sharing with us about this, and thank you for all that you do.
So all of the community partners get their own award. So this is actually your award.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Sure, yeah.
That was wonderful. Thank you once again for being here this evening. I think you know this already, but you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. But it doesn't always get better after we do something like this. So we understand if you need to get going as well. We are in receipts of petitions and communications. So if there's anyone here from the public that has something that they wish to bring before the Commission, now is the time. Okay, very well. While we are in receipts of petitions and communications, I did just want to make mention of the the recent crime activity, which has our community understandably, you know, concerned and upset. Sadly, while, well, it's definitely not my place to talk about the police business, and I frankly cannot talk about active investigations. It would appear that the city's fourth homicide for this year is being investigated. And that is, of course, alarming. And then when you look at the ages of the folks involved in this violent criminal activity, and you realize that it seems to be our teenagers that are engaging in this activity, it's just, it's very concerning. And I want the public to know that that I and other Commissioners have met with the Chief of Police and communicate with the Chief frequently. And the Chief of Police and the Clovis Police Department have my full support and the full support of this Commission. And we are very proud of the work that they are doing. And in fact, no one wants the criminal activity to be occurring. But if you'll notice, Clovis Police Department has, in swift fashion, solved these crimes and made arrests. And they're doing a fantastic job. And again, they certainly have my support. Heart goes out to those affected by each of these tragedies. Certainly, the family of Shamil Kirven. And we offer them our condolences. I just want to say that, you know, sometimes the question is, well, you know, what's the mayor going to do about crime? What is the city going to do? What is the police going to do about crime? And, you know, that's an appropriate question. And we have to answer those questions. And we're doing everything we can. And it starts, as I said, with a conversation with the Chief of Police to say, hey, I support you. What do you need from me? And, you know, we have to ask, I think, the bigger question. Why is it that young people or individuals in our beloved community are choosing violent crime over productive, healthy life? And that's a tough question to answer. But I, and I know this Commission and the leadership are committed to looking at, what are those controllable variables or factors that we have? You know, is it, you know, is it that the education system has failed somehow? We all know where the state ranks when we talk about education. But those of us that live here in Clovis, and especially those of us that have kids in the schools, know that Clovis Schools are top-notch, and they're doing a great job. The Summer Youth Program that the city ran, as well as the summer camps that the Clovis Municipal Schools ran, are wonderful programs. Engaged hundreds, if not over 1,000 kids, weekly, all summer long. Those are the types of programs that'll pay dividends that we can't calculate for, in the future. You know, did we miss these teenagers that are doing these criminal acts? Were they missed by these types of programs 10 years ago? I don't know. You know, is it that there's not enough, you know, job opportunity in our community? And, you know, is there something that's controllable on our part, given, when you think about employment opportunities? And I would say yes, to a degree. And that's why we work on economic development. We have Clovis Economic Development, working on job creation and job retention. Very soon, there will be an economic development plan presented before this Commission. That plan will help us to become even more focused on job creation and job retention. Is it that we have for too long neglected and not done anything about mental illness or substance abuse and those types of struggles that we know citizens of our city face? And if so, then maybe we're late, but we're doing something about it. You've heard us talk about a mental health and behavioral health facility that we are working on finding funding for. You're going to hear a presentation on that plan this evening. You know, is it a lack of recreational opportunities? You know, what is it? Why are people choosing, why are some individuals choosing criminal activity over a productive and healthy lifestyle? We have to ask ourselves those questions, and we are working on those things. But what you need to know is that the Police Department is doing a great job. Obviously, we have some staffing issues within the PD, but we're working on those things and making progress. And otherwise, the Chief of Police says he has what he needs. And I think that's apparent in that they are solving these crimes quickly and getting people in custody. Because of the age of these offenders and these kids involved in the things that we're hearing about in the news, I think it's a natural progression, especially for those of us that are parents of school-aged kids, to wonder, what does that mean as kids go back to school here next week? And you'll be glad to know that I visited with the Superintendent of Schools, and I was very impressed and very encouraged at how far out ahead of all of this CMS is. They've been coordinating with Clovis Police Department for a long time now on training and all of those things. And they are doing a great job with security within our schools. And as I say, I have school-aged kids, and I'm confident about them being safe and secure as they go to school next week, as I am confident in the Clovis PD. Commissioners, Mayor Pro Tem, any thoughts on that before we transition and give someone else the opportunity?
I'd like to say, very well said, Mayor. I think the public really needed to hear that, that we are totally behind our Police Department, 110%. And I appreciate those comments.
Thank you for that. We still are in receipts of petitions and communications, so one last opportunity. Is there anyone that has something they would like to bring before this Commission this evening? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on then to the consent agenda. Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, as you know, this is where the routine agenda items that you can acknowledge or wish to acknowledge with one motion are put. You have on the consent agenda this evening nine items. The first is the motion to place. The ninth is the motion to approve or acknowledge. I'll read two through eight. Item two is request for approval of adoption of ordinance number 2178-2022 relating to the lease of public property owned by the city of Clovis. Item three, request for approval of adoption of ordinance number 2179-2022 relating to the sale of public property within the city of Clovis. Item four, request for adoption of resolution number 3141-2022 of the Curry County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan as prepared by the members of the Curry County Hazard Mitigation Planning Team and Bold Planning. Item five is request for approval for the city of Clovis to be the fiscal agent for any 2023 capital outlay funds received by the Food Bank of Eastern New Mexico during the 2023 New Mexico Legislative Session. Item six, request for approval to apply for and accept the 2022 Local Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Funds. Item seven, request for approval to apply for and accept, if awarded, the 2022 T-Mobile Hometown Grant in the amount of $45,798.06 to renovate the education building, which is the old entrance at Hillcrest Park Zoo. Item eight, request for approval to appoint Latasha Padilla to serve on the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. That is your consent agenda, Commissioners, Mayor Pro Tem. Unless you have any objections, I would entertain a motion to place the indicated items on the consent agenda by unanimous vote.
Second.
It's been moved that we place the items on the consent agenda by Commissioner David Bryant. The second came from Mayor Pro Tem Bryant. Commissioners, please vote. And the vote is unanimous. The motion is carried. The items have been placed. Now is there a motion to approve or acknowledge all items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Jones, second from Commissioner Garza. Commissioners, please vote. Has everyone voted, please?
See, they're messing with me again. I was the second.
It's Swan's fault.
And again, the vote is unanimous, and the motion is carried. Thank you. We will move on to introduction and adoption of resolutions and ordinances. Two items under this section of the agenda this evening. The first is request for approval of adoption of resolution number 3142-2022, adopting the local infrastructure and capital improvements plan for years 2024 through 2028, and to advise and give us a little direction, perhaps some guardrails for what could be a lengthy conversation. Ms. Burrows?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. Good evening. Each year, the city of Clovis participates in the Department of Finance and Administration's Infrastructure and Capital Improvements Planning Process. The city develops a five-year plan for infrastructure and capital improvements, inputs the data into a database provided by DFA, and submits the database to DFA for publication into their master infrastructure and capital improvements plan. This document is then distributed to state agencies and legislators and used for state agency budget planning, as well as the allocation of legislative funding and some grant requests. This program requires that the governing body pass a resolution to adopt this plan. A public hearing to gather citizen input on the plan was held on July 27th here in the North Annex. And all community organizations that have requested projects are included in this plan. There's no fiscal impact to the city's budget, and this is a planning document. And attached in your packet, you will see the plan that we have drafted for your review and discussion and input this evening. As you see, as in previous years, the city of Clovis's affluent reuse system is there at the top of the list. To date, the project has been funded with about 18-plus million dollars' worth of funding. Of course, as you know, it's now at the Colonial Golf Course being reused there. I believe there are some pieces of the project that are still to be completed that Mr. Howell would like to complete. So we've got it there for another 1.8 million for this next year. And the Martin Luther King Boulevard improvements between 7th Street and 21st Street is there in second place this evening. And then in third, we have the city of Clovis Behavioral Health Facility, as you mentioned earlier on, Mayor. This is a collaborative effort with other municipalities and counties. And we'll talk about that a little bit more in a little while. The next one is the renovation for the Lyceum Theater for $500,000. As you know, the city of Clovis has been awarded a $500,000 grant from the federal government for saving America's treasures. But it's a one-for-one grant, so we're looking for some matching funds. And you can actually match federal and state funding, so we're looking for that. So various other, of course, the next one is the senior center kitchen equipment. As you know, we are now about to start construction of the Hillcrest Senior Life Facility. And so we're seeking some funding, additional funding for kitchen equipment for that facility. And then the next one is upgrades to the animal shelter improvements there, followed by lighting and so on. You can see down the list. One of the things that is actually on this list is for the food bank for cold storage. And I'm pleased to let you know that since I put this together, we have been advised that the food bank has received $500,000 in the food security funding. The item is on page 181 of your packets. Towards the bottom there, it's number 40. So they are asking if that could be taken off the list and replaced with $100,000 for upgrades to their office spaces. This is a longer plan than usual. We've included various other items that the departments are seeking assistance with. And we are pursuing this. You have to have an item on the ICIP in order to receive funding from the state. And of course, as you know, there are various funding sources potentially out there at the moment. So we're wanting to make sure that we have everything on the list that could potentially be, we could potentially be looking for funding for. With that, I'll stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burrows. Wonderful explanation. You know, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, this can have the feel of, at least for me, of a wish list. You know, because you're all very well acquainted with the budget, having just gone through budget season. And you know that we have more that needs done than funding to take care of it. And so we wind up putting a lot of things on here that we know probably we're not getting funding for for some amount of time. However, it isn't just a wish list. It's a planning tool. And I think we're maybe more than ever, you know, looking at it that way. And then practically, our ICIP list ends up on a dashboard that the legislators have, you know, that they can access so that they can see when we're requesting funding that, yes, we've planned for that. It's not, we didn't pull this out of thin air. We have a need that we're planning for. It's, you know, number, what have you, on our list. And so this is important, far more important than just a wish list. This is a planning tool. What are your thoughts about the list as you see it?
You know, Mayor, I'm good with the list. I mean, there are certain things on the list. Of course, all these, this whole list requires funding, you know? And so there are certain things that may come up on the list that may be on the end of the list that we can, you know, get grants for or whatever. They'll come up a little quicker than maybe what's at the top of the list. But I think it gives us just a good roadmap of projects that we'd like to see addressed in the future. And, you know, depending on funding, we'll kind of see where it goes.
Yeah, agreed. You can have, you know, we could have some grant opportunity pop up that helps us accomplish something on here way before we would have thought. And in fact, our city management and administration are well-versed in looking for those grant opportunities and seizing the opportunity to apply for those grants. And we all know that even just through the capital outlay process, we can end up getting funding for something that we might not have thought we were going to get. You know, we have some examples from the last session, so. Any other thoughts, discussion?
Mayor, my only thought is Commissioner Chris Bryant and I attended this public meeting, and Ms. Burrows went through these, each one of these one by one, and answered anybody's questions and our questions as Commissioners. She was very thorough, and I'm content with everything on the list. We only need $197 million to finish them all. So I think we're not So I think we're not looking, we're not asking for too much.
No, not at all.
But I'm happy with it and I'm ready to move for approval.
Sounds great. We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Paula.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Jones. It has been moved and seconded that we would approve adoption of resolution number three-one-four-two dash twenty-twenty-two, adopting the ICIP plan for 2024 through 2028. Any further debate?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, if I may, I just want to let you know that we are not setting legislative priorities as part of this this evening. It'll be coming back to you in November for you to do that. They're just asking for this a lot earlier on in the year, so we'll wait until later for that. Please, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that very much. Unless there's any further discussion or debate, Commissioners, please vote. And the vote's unanimous, eight to zero, and the motion is carried. Thank you. Item two, under this section of the agenda, is request for approval of adoption of resolution number three-one-four-four dash twenty-twenty-two, a joint city-county resolution accepting the Eastern New Mexico Regional Behavioral Health Facility feasibility study by Anishium Health. Ms. Burrows?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. I don't believe Mr. Corbett's with us this evening. Is Stephen correct? Thank you. So in front of you this evening, we're bringing to you a resolution which the various organizations, municipalities and counties are taking to their commissions in regard to the acceptance of the regional behavioral health feasibility study, which has been prepared by Anishium Health. The cities of Clovis, Portales, Village of Fort Sumner, Curry County, DeBaca County, Quay County and Roosevelt County have joined together to address the mental health and substance use disorders, concerns of their residents. And local government leaders have combined their resources in a first-of-its-kind collaborative effort and issued a request for proposal for a feasibility study for a regional behavioral health facility. A company by the name of Anishium Health, a Denver-based consulting firm, was hired to conduct the feasibility study on behalf of these entities between January and June 2022. And the study included a needs assessment to determine the impact of behavioral health conditions, including both mental health and substance use disorders on residents in the full county region. There was a gap analysis conducted to identify the needed services not currently available. There was a solution designed to meet the identified service gaps. There was a financial analysis to determine the financial feasibility and funding, potential funding sources, and a benefit analysis to assess the projected benefits to the community. Anishium engaged with community members throughout the study, including regular meetings with city and county representatives. They conducted twenty-plus interviews with community stakeholders, providers and individuals, with lived experience and family members with behavioral health conditions, and a community listening session, which was attended by more than fifty attendees from across the region. And throughout the process, they learned about residents' behavioral health concerns and priorities, service gaps and their impact on people's lives, and what an ideal regional facility would look like according to these stakeholders. They analyzed data from public, local public agencies, hospitals and behavioral health providers, along with sensors, public health and other data sources to further assess the needs and gaps in services. They evaluated the financial feasibility of a regional facility to meet the service gaps, identified and examined several ownership models and funding options. And finally, they assessed the benefits of a regional facility to the communities within the region. In their findings for inpatient care, this is, I won't read all of this to you, but it's included in your, in your document. And of course, the recommendation based on their findings was to establish a behavioral health facility that will serve as a hub for inpatient care for the region and will meet current and future needs for behavioral health services. This would be an eighty-thousand-square-foot facility. And the conversation is to locate that here in Clovis, Curry County. The inpatient services would be forty-two adult psychiatric beds, twelve adult detoxification beds, twelve adult short-term intensive residential care for SUD, eighteen child adolescent psychiatric beds, twelve geriatric beds, for a total, as I said, sorry, ninety-six beds. And they recommend providing services and programs geared towards the specific needs of military members, considering the large military and veteran populations in the region. There would also be an outpatient care as part of this and crisis care. And so we're bringing this to you this evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, the report which we sent to you on July the sixth for your consideration and an action, please, as we move forward to the next stage. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Burrows. Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, how many of you have participated in one or more of the sessions related to this work? Several of you have been to them. I just think it's a wonderful regional project. I think, you know, in this room, perhaps it was maybe one of the first meetings. And, you know, this room was full of folks from, you know, all over, all of the communities that Ms. Burrows mentioned, all coming together because this is a problem that's big enough, it takes all of us, right? And, you know, just earlier this evening, we were celebrating the successful partnership between Cannon Air Force Base and the community pertaining to youth. Well, we know that one of the gaps in service available locally is one that's of particular concern to the Air Force, and that is adolescent behavioral health. And, you know, that can actually mean that a Cannon family, you know, doesn't end up taking this assignment because that type of care isn't available for their, their child that needs it. Or if they do come to Cannon, then they're, they're driving hours to, you know, some other community to receive that care. And we're all aware of, you know, the incidences where you have folks around town dealing with mental health issues or behavioral health issues that, you know, their, their struggle lands them in handcuffs and in the detention center periodically because they've trespassed or because, you know, they're in crisis. But what they really need is intervention in their mental health and behavioral health. And so for those reasons, I'm, and many others, I'm very supportive of this. I love this regional effort that's underway. What comments or questions do you have about the plan?
Mayor? With my nursing background, I think this is an excellent, and this part of the state, we really need something like this. The facility, I think, would be phenomenal. I think it will be full all the time and we can help our citizens, and I so heartily support this.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Mayor Pro Tem, you were going to say something?
Yeah, and I completely agree with Commissioner Casaus. I've attended a few meetings and seemed like all the communities and all the counties that have come together are very, very supportive of this. And I think it's a much-needed program on our side of the state, so I'll move for approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion for approval from Mayor Pro Tem Bryant, second from Commissioner Casaus. Any further debate or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, what is before you is approval of adoption of resolution number three-one-four-four, the joint city-county resolution accepting the Eastern New Mexico Regional Behavioral Health Facility feasibility study by Anishium Health. Please vote. And the vote is unanimous, the motion is carried. Thank you, and thanks for advising on that one, Ms. Burrows. We are on to the new business section in the agenda this evening where we have two items. The first is request for approval of appointment of one Clovis resident to serve on the Civil Aviation Board. And for direction on this, we're back to Ms. Burrows.
Um, yes.
We're asking a lot of you this evening.
Yeah, I just said, Justin, would you like to do some of this? Mr. John King has resigned his position on the Civil Aviation Board. The position has been advertised in the news, with the news media, and Mr. James Burns, Mr. Matthew Lansford and Mr. Robert Tayis have applied to serve, and an election is therefore needed. I believe that, and I know that Mr. Matthew Lansford is not going to be here this evening, but I believe that we, Vicky forwarded you an email from him regarding his interest in the position. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burrows. Yes, I saw that email from Mr. Lansford expressing his interest. And I noticed that we have in person here with us this evening Captain Robbie Tayis from, also from the Clovis PD, but seeking to be from Civil Aviation Board. And then we also have with us Mr. James Burns. We can take them in whatever order you like. Let's hear from Captain Tayis first. Would you like to come tell us about your interest in serving?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners and guests. My name's Robbie Tayis. I live at fifteen-hundred Fairmont Court here in Clovis. And I'm pretty much a lifelong resident of Clovis. I was born and raised here. I've gone through the Clovis schools growing up, and I have a deep love for my community. A number of years ago, well, thirty-one years ago, I decided I wanted to serve my community and I came to work for the Clovis Police Department. I'm in year thirty-one in law enforcement. I left for a short period of time to upstate New York, became a police officer in the state of Vermont, where I maintained my law enforcement credentials. And then I came back to Clovis in 2001, and I've been here since. I am getting to the end of my career. I'm starting to think that sometime in the near future, within the next five to six years, law enforcement is probably going to become a thing of the past, and it's going to be time to pass the torch on to the young men and women that work for us. And so I have, you know, I'm at the point in my career where it's time to start training and helping them become better than I was for my position. And it's time to look at what I can continue to do for my community. I have an interest in aviation that started a number of years ago. And that interest started with going out to a local fly-in and having an opportunity to fly with one of the area pilots, and I kind of fell in love with it. And ever since then, I have been a frequent guest out at our airport. And so it was interesting to see about eighteen months ago, when Clovis Airport went from Clovis Municipal Airport to Clovis Regional Airport, and seeing the difference in the clientele that's coming in now versus the small commuters that were coming in then. And I'm really kind of excited to see what's going to happen in the future. I visit with James Harris quite a bit. I visit with Lee quite a bit. And we talk about the changes and the things that are going on, and I'm excited to see the changes. I'm looking forward to seeing what changes in the future, and I'd like to be a part of it. I, I'm not an expert in flying. I'm, I'm just, I'm an interested person. But I do have some areas that I believe can help. You know, when it comes to development and planning, I have a little bit of background in that. And also when it comes to security. So just, I'm an interested person, wanting to give a little bit back to my community. And this is an opportunity to do that, and I appreciate you taking the time to hear me. And I look forward to whatever comes next. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
And on the chance we have some questions, Captain, don't go too far away. And then watch, there won't be questions.
I was hoping.
May you stop it. But do we have questions for Captain Tayis? See, I stopped you for no reason. You had done such a good job, there were no questions, and then I stopped you. Sorry about that.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Burns? Former Commissioner James Burns. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. I, I'm not a pilot, although I know a lot of people that are. But I have been involved in things at the airport, basically since I've moved to Clovis. I was a member of the Civil Air Patrol for several years and also have done some work with my son at the airport for his Eagle project. But also through the years, working with him as he went through the stages to get his private pilot's license, I got acquainted with the flying public and really enjoy that. I was privileged to serve as, on the Citizens Committee to Select a Air Carrier a few years ago, which was an enjoyable experience. And having served on the City Commission, also learned a lot about the airport as well as funding and how to get it. And I think the current management is doing a great job. I'd like to help. I think I can offer some benefits with the business acumen that I have hard ran into over the years. So I appreciate your, your support.
Well, thank you for that. Do we have any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. Very good. Well, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, unless there's any debate, why don't we vote? Thanks for that, Mr. Hawalt. Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, this is one of those tough ones. You know, when you have three, three good applicants for one position, you're saying yes to one and no to the other two, and you hope that the other two don't take it personally and want to serve somewhere else. We do appreciate your interest. If you're not selected, we hope you'll keep looking for places to plug in and help us on committees and boards with the city.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, Mr. Robbie Tayis has been appointed to serve on the Civil Aviation Board. Thank you.
Wonderful. Congratulations, Captain. Thank you. And Commissioner Burns, thank you for your interest in serving. And we know that you serve in a number of places around the community. We hope you'll keep looking for places to serve with the city. Thank you. Next, we have item two under new business. It is request for approval of direction regarding the management of the Clovis Winged Shooting Complex and Archery Range. And for this one, we are going to pick on Mr. Hawalt. Mr. Hawalt, please tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. I don't know, I could defer to Ms. Burrows if.
Ah, let's see what you have to say. We'll see how it goes.
All right. So obviously, back in May, we had finished up with the construction of the shooting range itself. And we're looking to obviously get the facility open. So I reached out at that time to the management company that we had previously been working with, who had actually had agreed to manage the facility for us for the next twenty-five years to let them know to start preparing, to prepare for our grand opening and start getting ready to open the facility and manage it. Unfortunately, in June, I received a letter from them saying that they weren't going to be able to continue for various reasons. And so at that point in time, we obviously had to start looking at other avenues for us to get the range open. And so in conversations that we've had with the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish, trying to look at revenue sources, trying to look at what the agreements that were put into place and the commitments that we had to the Department of Game and Fish to get the construction completed and to make sure that we're honoring those. Some of those agreements tied to the fees that we were able to actually charge out at the range. And so we went back to them and said, hey, look, some things have changed. Actually, time has, time has passed since the agreement was originally written, and asked if we could increase the fees. And they certainly did agree to that. We also asked, in which, to add on to that, they said that, hey, that we recognize that fees are important to the range and also are granting us the ability to look at those on an annual basis to make sure that we're still staying competitive with the market for the operation or what we're charging out at the range. We also asked, previously, the agreement stated that all of the revenues general- generated from the range had to go back into the maintenance of the range. And so we wanted to expand upon that, um, and ask if some of those revenue, or if revenues could also go back towards the operation, meaning salaries, uh, for, uh, employees that potentially could be, um, uh, employed out there on behalf of the City of Clovis. And they said, yes, absolutely. So, uh, they agreed upon allowing some of those revenues to go back towards that as well. Another part of the discussion that we had with them was whether or not, uh, there was some flexibility in the days that, uh, the, the range itself was open. Uh, we are required to have the range open for four days, uh, six hours, uh, apiece on those days, and they were previously staggered, uh, throughout the week and then on Saturday and Sunday. From an operational standpoint, that didn't make sense to have those days staggered. Uh, so we requested, instead of being open, I believe, on a like a Tuesday, Wednesday, Saturday, Sunday, uh, we asked if it could be opened on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And so they've agreed to, to that as well. So that allows us from a, uh, having employees out there on a consistent basis and heating and cooling the building, some, some consistency is with that as well. So, uh, knowing that we can make all of those changes and amendments to the existing agreement, uh, we went, then went back and started looking at what a proposed budget could look like, uh, for, for us to operate it. And so, uh, we obviously, i- it's, it's projections. Uh, we don't have any historical data, um, to be able to go off of, um, but we, we did our best, uh, Ms. Burrows, Mr. Russell, and myself to put together a budget, which, uh, you can find on packet page 191. Um, and so, we looked at, uh, you know, how many employees do we need to have out there? So we, we are projecting two employees right now out there, a, a range superintendent slash range master and a full-time maintenance person. Uh, they are included in those, uh, personnel services because they are towards the lower end of the, uh, hourly rate, rate. Uh, we thought, well, we may need to entice some individuals, uh, so we put included in there, uh, our full benefits package for those particular employees. So, if you do the math, uh, it, just based off the hourly rate, it doesn't add up. So, uh, that's why I wanted to point out that our benefits packages are included in there as well. We also looked at various contractual services that may be needed, um, out there, as well as different commodities that may need, be needed out there. And so we came up with a total estimated expenditures of $135,800. We then started to look at the revenues, and, and obviously those fees were important to us, and that's why I wanted to mention that, and started trying to do our best guess projections on the potential revenues that could be generated, uh, out at the facility. So, uh, between just the number of shooters coming out every day, times those fees, uh, then the potential for registered shoots, uh, how many individuals would potentially, or the archery range, how much that could potentially be used, or the indoor pellets or indoor archery ranges, how much of those could be potentially used. And then just, like I said, once again, just did the math and tried to come up with some projected revenues. Our total revenues that we projected were $93,840, which obviously leaves a difference between, uh, the revenues and expenditures of about $41,960. That difference in this entire budget, um, would have to come out of our general fund, which is, uh, how we fund our Parks Department. Um, we do have some revenues, minor revenues, but of course, they don't cover all of our expenditures in the Parks Department, so this too would also come out of our, uh, general fund. Um, and so, uh, took this to the Parks and Recreation Committee, uh, last evening, uh, had a great discussion with that committee, um, and they unanimously voted to move this forward, moving in the direction of the City of Clovis, uh, managing the facility itself. Um, another option that the, um, Commission could consider is whether or not we want to seek, uh, outside organizations to try and manage the facility for us and us not, uh, bring it back in-house. Some of the disadvantages, I would say, of doing that is timing, um, of us trying to get the facility open. If we go through the RFP process, uh, that's going to continue to delay. I mean, we, we drafted an RFP, uh, just in case, um, but still, we'd have to advertise, review, uh, and, and we're not sure if there's individuals out there, um, that may want to do that or not. So, um, the recommendation was to, to move forward with the City of Clovis bringing this back in-house. One other thing that I'd like to mention before opening up to, uh, questions is that, uh, just to remind the public that this is a shotgun range, uh, shotgun range only in archery, that there is no rifles or handgun capabilities for individuals, uh, to come out there and utilize the facility. And, and there, there's not another option in town for you to be able to go out, shoot trapper skeet or sporting clays. Um, and so we're not in competition with maybe a provide, private organization when it comes to, uh, providing those capabilities. So I just want to take the opportunity to remind the public of that. So, uh, with that, Mr. Mayor, uh, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for that explanation on this item. Uh, as you mentioned, it was in front of the Parks Recreation and Beautification Committee just last night, and I know that there was a, uh, you know, quite a discussion that took place. Many of you are, are members of, of that committee. Uh, Commissioner Paula, you chair that committee. Do you have, do you have, obviously, there was a unanimous vote there, but do you have some thoughts on this?
Well, Mayor, the only thing that I can add is, I think, um, there was a, a unanimous agreement that we want to get this facility open, that it's been sitting, um, ready to go for some time now, and I think, uh, we're excited, we're excited for the public to use it. And I think that's why we, um, are willing and ready to go with, uh, this option here and have the City of Clovis run the facility.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that. Anything from other members of that committee? You know, my, my concern, while it's a small amount, you know, um, and Mr. Hawalt and, uh, Mr. Hooper and others are, are skilled at, and, and experienced with budgets, but this budget is a guess, and, and our best guess has us, you know, subsidizing it at just under $42,000, and so that's concerning. But as I think that through, you know, 90% of the funding came from Mexico Game and Fish, and it comes with that caveat that, you know, profits have to go back into the facility. And so, you know, this is, this is designed for a nonprofit to, to operate it for us. But we lost the nonprofit that was going to do that, and in the absence of another one ready to go, this, I, I, you know, th- this makes sense. So, um, Commissioner Porter, were you about to? No? Okay.
Sir. I have a couple of questions.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem.
On the hours and days of operation, are we looking at a seasonal operation or is this a year-long operation? What are we, what are we doing?
That's, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, Brian, uh, we, the agreement with the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish says we have to be open four days a week for six hours a day.
Okay.
And so that's, that is year-long.
Year-round.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, good. Uh, the other thing is, as we're looking for people to operate this, what kind of qualifications are we looking for?
Yeah, and fantastic question. So we've started to put together the, uh, job descriptions, uh, and so, when it comes to, obviously, the individual that's going to be the range manager, manager or the superintendent, he's going to have, one of the certifications that we have in there is that they have to have an, an NRA range manager certification. And so, uh, we feel that that's important, obviously, uh, making sure that the, they're familiar with, um, firearm safety. And so, you know, and then, plus, they'll have to be trained on, uh, how to load and unload, uh, the machines for throwing the trap and skeet and sporting clay, and so, but it's, it's general managerial type skills that we're looking for.
Okay. And do we have any idea of an opening date in sight?
Got to get somebody employed first. So, unfortunately not, but, I mean, it's obviously the sooner that, uh, we, we have direction, and then we can finalize those details and start, start getting it advertised.
Okay, thank you.
Those are good questions. Mr. Hawalt, yeah, I, I have a question about the, the personnel, uh, and those being full-time positions. Uh, is it, is it understood that, that it would be full-time work for two people even if your range is only open 24 hours?
So, no, we, they're, they're part-time with benefits, basically, positions. And so while, while it, because it's at 24 hours, uh, within the work week, so it's not a four, forty, forty-hour week. So we budgeted based off the 24 hours, not off a 40-hour.
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Garza.
Uh, you know, when we started working on this, uh, the, the idea was to bring people in from outside the community to have use of this facility. So, this is a very low estimates, in my opinion. I think we can do better, and we have some tournaments and bring more people in, so that will be, you know, more profitability there. So, uh, I'm, I'm okay with this. I think we, we can do something with this, and, uh, everybody can benefit in the community, uh, from people coming into the community, so that's a plus.
I hear optimism, Commissioner Garza. You're, you're optimistic, and, and I think you, you're rightly so. I mean, this, this may well bring a, a lot of folks into our community because I think we have a really state-of-the-art facility. And so the, the shooting community is going to be excited about coming here for the, for the events.
One more comment, kind of based on Commissioner Garza's, uh, comment. I don't think the plan was to only at forever be open the four days a week, correct? Like, the goal is to have this open more, to generate more money, but this is where we're starting.
And, and Mr. Mayor, members of the, the Commission, that is absolutely correct. So that's a minimum requirement for us to be open the, the four days at six hours a pilot. So we can be open more than that, obviously. I, it, what we've budgeted in here from a revenue standpoint, we're brainstorming other ideas to, to come of revenue. You know, there's, there's the, the classrooms that are located within the Hunter Education Center. We have to make those, uh, classrooms available for Hunter Education classes. However, if they're not in use for Hunter Education courses, uh, we have confirmed with Department of Game and Fish that we can utilize those for, uh, we can rent them out for concealed carry classes. We could rent them out if somebody wanted to have a birthday party out there and, uh, do some sports shooting, they, we could do that. Um, one of the things that we are required to do by the Department of Game and Fish is, if we are having a registered shoot at the facility or a tournament at the facility, we do have to still keep it open to the public.
Right.
And so while it's a four-bay skeet and, or trap and skeet overlay course, we would have to keep some, one of those bays probably open in case just the general public comes in still wanting to shoot on that particular day. Um, that is a requirement of our agreement with them as well.
Yes. Commissioner David Bryant.
Well, I think I have more of a request than a question. Um, I understand we're going to be selling, uh, clays and, and having them available for people, and, uh, shotgun shells, stuff like that. It's my request is, can we not bid that out and let our locals have a chance to, to bid those?
And, and so, the thought process behind the whole gift shop line item in there is that, um, uh, the sporting clays, we have to buy. I mean, and we'll buy those, we have, oh, we have a truckload of those already out there in storage, and that was part of the grant for us to be able to purchase of those. And so we have a whole storage room full of pallets of sporting clays themselves, and so that'll just become something that we have to routinely buy, um, depending on frequency and use. And, uh, when it comes to that, well, of course, we'll have to, to follow all purchasing rules in the future on, depending on the quantities that we're buying. When it comes to the gift shop items and, and specifically to, uh, boxes of shotgun shells, our thought process on that is, we're not going to have a stock of shotgun shells out there. Uh, of course, with the location of where it is, being seven miles north of town, uh, if individuals are out there enjoying themselves, um, and participating in the activities, and they run out of shotgun shells, but want to keep shooting, we don't want to potentially lose that business, uh, and sell them more rounds of clays to go out and shoot, because we're not able to sell them shells. And so that was our thought process there is, like I said, we don't want to compete with our, our local shops here in town. Uh, we just want to make sure we have enough stock out there, uh, to where if somebody does run out, they don't lose out on that opportunity.
I was just hoping that maybe our locals would get a chance to supply those to us.
Yeah, and when we start purchasing that, um, I actually had, had visited with Captain Tayis and said, I don't know where to buy shotgun shells in bulk. I thought our police department might. And so I had him to go out and start researching that for me, and so that's, that's something we're, we're looking at.
And, and I think, Commissioner David Bryant, your, your question is, you know, it's a, it's a good one, but, uh, Mr. Hawalt, maybe you could speak to this. I know you've talked to Game and Fish quite a bit, but there's, there's the part where you can't make a profit, right? So would, would, would that apply to retail sales at the facility?
We're allowed to, yeah, we're allowed to mark them up.
Okay.
And so the revenues we make off those sales, they have to go back in to, to the facility itself.
So, so even if we were to say, which we probably, I'm going to guess we can't do, but if we were able to, you know, have a, a use, you know, have a lease agreement and let a, let a private company lease the retail space inside the building and then, you know, and, and have a retail operation inside the facility, they wouldn't be able to take profits with them because of that.
That's correct.
The, the fact that we can't, we can't profit from it. The profits have to go back and the revenues have to go back.
Right.
So, uh...
Correct.
Again, this was designed for a nonprofit to, to, to run and operate, but, uh...
Yeah, under, under that scenario, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'm with approval.
Second.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Garza, second from Commissioner Paula. Any further debate? What is before you is the approval of direction regarding the management of the Clovis Winged Shooting Complex and Archery Range. Commissioners, please vote. And the vote is unanimous. The motion is carried. Thank you. Everybody get your shotguns clean. We'll move on to, uh, reports of boards, officers, and committees. It looks like the Clovis Carver Library Board met on Monday, July 25th. Do we have a report?
I do, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, we did our, introduce our newest member of the board, Iris Green. We held nominations for Vice Chairman, which Commissioner Robert Sandvall with the county agreed to, agreed to serve. Heard updates from Mrs. Henchy on the Valley Trench that we just finished up with, the final report on the memorial funds and the current landscaping projects. We also discussed the two women, Wanda and Christie, that we lost, uh, in 2017, and the others that were injured during that time as well, uh, that, which the shooting, of course, was on August 28th, 2017. Uh, we want to continue to have a moment of silence from 4:08 to 4:15 to honor these two women and the other individuals that were, that were injured during that time. Uh, the board definitely wants to remember that unfortunate day and continue to honor these victims. Uh, Ms. Burrows also gave a brief report on the Behavioral Health Facility, which was very well, uh, presented, and we appreciate that, and that's the end of the report.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, how, um, how is it proposed that the moment of silence, uh, silence will be carried out? Is that, uh, uh, we'll get that information out by press release as a reminder for the whole community to observe this?
Of course.
Yeah, okay.
By all means.
Very good. Thank you. Um, next, is there a report on Public Works Committee, which met, uh, Wednesday, July 27th? I have a feeling we're coming back right here.
That's, you're coming right back to me.
Okay, all right.
We approved the prioritization list of roadways and also discussed and recommended signage for Jake Brakes. Uh, we currently have signage at each entrance of the city, uh, but we decided to have two additional signs on Brady going east and west. Uh, heard city updates from Mr. Hawalt and Clovis Municipal School update from, uh, Mr. J. Brady. That concludes my report.
Thank you for that. Appreciate your service on those, those committees and boards. Um, the ICIP public meeting makes this list because it occurred. However, I, I don't believe we need to, uh, hear a report on that unless there was some... No? Okay, very good. We will move on then to, uh, report on the Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority Board Meeting, which took place on Thursday, July 28th. Um, I'll hit the high spots and stand for any questions. The, um, Water Authority Board, um, met actually in, in this, in this space, and, and in fact, one of the, the new business items that we took action on was a change to our regular, uh, board meeting schedule and the locations. When we meet in Clovis, we'll now meet in the Ingram Room of the library, so on the opposite end of, of this building. So you'll want to make note of that. That room, uh, is a little, little better situation, uh, versus where we have been meeting. And when that room is booked, uh, we will, uh, meet in this room here in the North Annex. So, um, typically, the board meetings are held here in Clovis. However, once a quarter, we do go meet in a member community, that being either Texaco, Peralos, or Alida. Um, another new business item we took action on was approval of the grant agreement for the $10 million that the legislature appropriated for our project in the last session. We also approved the fourth quarter, uh, financials, as well as the FY 2023 final budget. budget. And we approved the recommendation for the Alida lateral. So, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of thought and planning that goes to the the route of the actual pipeline itself. And Jacobs Engineering had given the the subcommittee, which was, which included myself and the mayor of Alida, they gave us two, two options and then gave us scoring criteria and took us through the process of scoring, and we we selected the route that the the pipeline will take from Peralos to Alida. And heard heard reports from our our federal and state consultants as well as from our administrator. Commissioner Garza, Mayor Protim, you're you're both on that board. Would you add anything else to that report?
Nope. You covered it well.
Good job. All right, very good. Well, thank you. We will move on then to, of course, we have the special City Commission meeting on the twenty-eighth. The one agenda item was the FY twenty-three final budget, which you approved. And then last Saturday, July thirtieth, the New Mexico Municipal League Resolutions Committee Meeting was held in Albuquerque. Several of you went up, or, you know, went went to Albuquerque for that meeting, as did I. Did anyone want to report on that? Okay, I'd be happy to. The Municipal League, as you know, we are, we are members of the Municipal League, and we we leverage the benefits of that in in many different ways. One of them is participating in the the Resolutions Committee Meetings. And 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 I think it's a great, it's a great thing that we do. It's it's quite a learning experience. The Municipal League has quite a bit of of lobby weight, if you will. And so the the resolutions that they pass become oftentimes, you know, you know, pieces of legislation that that they're helping push during the next session. So to be, to be involved in that was, was, I think, a great experience. One resolution that I I definitely want to tell you about, and I presented this resolution as a new resolution from the floor on Saturday, and it was the resolution dealing with behavioral health and mental health facilities. And I'll just read you the title so you you get the, you get the gist. But and this was passed, of course, by by the league. Supporting programs for increased awareness regarding behavioral health and legislation for additional funding support for behavioral health needs in the state of New Mexico. Obviously, we're working on our push for our regional behavioral health facility. We wanted the state legislature to, to understand that the Municipal League supports this this type of work statewide so that hopefully they will support our asks when we go and ask for for our specific ask. Next, the Civil Aviation Board met this week on Tuesday. Civil Aviation Board is is one that I serve on, so I'll I'll hit the high spots for you. Inplainments, Denver Air Connections is is still having success with the daily flights to Dallas-Fort Worth as well as Denver International. Inplainments year-to-date through last month are now seven thousand four hundred and forty-four. So well on our way to exceeding that goal of ten thousand, which not only is an indication that, you know, we're we're really doing things, but with that comes additional funding from the FAA for our airports so we can continue to make improvements and expand all that's happening out there. The airport represents just so much opportunity. Our Airport Director reported on the completion of the the jump training that took place out there. You may have, I may have reported on that last time, or maybe you've you've just been aware of that. But the, the the military was out on our airport property conducting jump training, and Mr. Harris reported that a C-130 did land on our runway out there, which he was very excited about. The, let's see, we also approved a memorandum of understanding with the TSA, just dealing on, dealing with some shared space within within the airport so that TSA can continue operating. We talked about the fact that Coming Up is a fun event. Captain Tejas referred to this type of event when he was telling us why he was interested in serving on civil aviation. But Wings and Wheels, if you remember, we had, James Harris held that event out there last year. That event will be on October first this fall. Airplane show, car show, food vendors, all of that kind of fun stuff. And then lastly, I'll I'll tell you about a groundbreaking. On Monday at two PM, we'll be doing a groundbreaking for the water transmission line, which is going to extend the city's water system out to the airport. The Secretary of Economic Development Department, Alicia Keys, will be in town for that groundbreaking. And so I'd like to invite all of you to join us if if you can and celebrate that investment on the part of the state of New Mexico in our region. A little over two point one three five million dollars of state local economic development funding that came to help with that project. Lastly, do we have a report from Parks, Recreation, and Beautification Committee?
We do. We had a very lengthy meeting last night, but I promised not to make it a lengthy summary. We did discuss the shooting range, which I won't go over that again because we, I gave the recommendation of the committee and we voted on that tonight. The main issue we discussed last night was the prioritization of improvements at Ryerson Park, Potter Park, and Green Acres Park. We gave guidance to Mr. Hooper and the city on where the commission kind of feels that a majority of the money we will receive in capital outlay, where we think it should go regarding those three parks. I think the agreement was that Green Acres is kind of the heart of the city, and it hasn't had much attention in many, many years, and we'd really like to see it spruced up. We also heard from Mr. Curry at the, that ran the summer youth program and what a tremendous success it was. He said he had over a hundred children that came through the program at some point during the summertime, so I think that was wonderful, a wonderful program for our youth. And he is so energetic, I wish I had just a little bit of his energy. He now wants to start some future leagues at Roy Walker for youth, whether it be basketball or art classes, and even some adult league sporting events as well. So we gave him the green light to go ahead and and get started on that as soon as he can. And the last thing I'll report on is we are looking for groups to volunteer, whether it be a sports group or from the base or a business organization here in town. Mr. Lechner is having an event called Love the Zoo. It's going to be Saturday, September twenty-fourth at eight AM, and these groups are going to be helping him with some special projects around the zoo, such as painting and cleaning up and entertaining the tigers from outside the fence line, I suppose. Anyway, if there are groups out that would like to join us on September twenty-fourth, please contact the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Paula, and very excited to hear about the ideas about youth programming and as well as the investments in our parks to to improve our parks. Just really think that 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 committee is functioning properly and and really excited about everything going on with parks. Thank you. Next, are there future agenda items to mention?
Mayor, Mayor Protim, Commissioners, the next agenda, we will have the MOU with TSA, which was discussed at the Civil Aviation Board the other evening, the operating and use agreement that's being required by the state for the food bank for that five hundred thousand dollars I referred to earlier, and the citizen members for the Revenue Review Committee, a report to you on the summer youth program, a use agreement between the City of Clovis and Clovis Schools for their use of various city-owned facilities. And then we have an action regarding the Water Trust Board, funding for the Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority, and that's all I have so far. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that. Commissioners, your Mayor Protim, do you have future agenda items that you would like to mention? All right, very good. We'll talk about upcoming meetings, date, time, and place of city board and commission meetings. The groundbreaking that I mentioned in my report from Civil Aviation, the CVN, Clovis Regional Airport Transmission Line Groundbreaking will be at two PM on Monday, August eighth. You'll want to come join us for that. That's, again, an exciting celebration of an investment of state economic development funds in our region. Planning and Zoning Commission will meet at three PM on Wednesday, August tenth, here in the North Annex, and the City Commission will meet at five fifteen on Thursday, August eighteenth, here in this room. We are adjourned.